Those receiving following minutes. Second, all favor.
Aye.
All favor. All favor. Uh, hearings and reports, commissioners.
Just welcome. We have our student council from the National Middle School sixth grade here today. These are our future, our future leaders, our future everything's going right there.
Glad you're here. You like to be out schooled a little bit, do you? We'll try to rush through this to get you back for third lunch.
They did ask me, they're, yeah, they're wanting to get to, they're getting to the wing of the mall for lunch.
Oh, really? Anybody lose a test, missing a test today being down here? Okay, well I'm sure you make it up easily. Glad you're here. Would, uh, y'all like to introduce yourselves so we'll have in the minutes who was here today? Y'all stand up one at a time and give us your name. Probably not gonna work, is it? Yeah, speak loud and clear, okay?
My name is Emily.
I'm Mary Howard.
I'm Aubrey Foster.
Evan Jobe.
I'm Brian.
My name's Pastor Diana.
I'm Kaylee Tackett.
I'm Axel Rice.
Good morning, York.
I'm Alyssa Lucas.
Staff two, Ms. Williams.
Rebecca Williams.
Corey Bryant.
I had a lot to do with both those people being on staff at the National Middle School. Very proud of y'all. Thanks for being here. Commissioners, events. I have, uh, two proclamations to read today. This first one is, proclamation by the Mayor of Ashland and the Board of Commissioners, whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in sixty-eight children nationally and one in forty-five in Kentucky. Whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment. Throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. Whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present. And whereas Autism Kentucky is spearheading an awareness effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. Now therefore being resolved that I, Stephen Gilmore, do hereby proclaim April twenty nineteen as National Autism Awareness Month in the City of Ashland and urge all employees and residents participate in our city's National Autism Awareness Month activities in order to kind of better educate about autism, create a better community for individuals with autism. And we're very proud to be involved in doing that. This is proclamation by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, whereas emergencies can occur at any time and require police, fire, and emergency medical service. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the regional public safety communications center, Boyd County, Ashland, Kentucky. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety to telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety telecommunicators of the regional public safety communications center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year. Whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore I, Stephen Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim April fourteen to twenty, twenty nineteen, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Thank you. Will, please sit apart for part minutes. City Mayor, your report.
I'm gonna be very brief since one item will just come up. A lot of discussion on the riverfront walking trail and we just got some hot off the press pictures that came in. There's so many people to thank for this, starting with the Mayor and Commissioners from y'all's willingness to support. And also, of course, Bill Ashland for all the volunteer efforts they've done down there, our city workers. We've been able to prioritize when they've had time to do some work. But just wanted to pull these up. And then Kim Jenkins last night was out there making sure that the paths flowed the way that she had in her, artistically set up in her mind. If you could just flip through those, okay. But this is what the path looks like. Still gonna see some additional work. We'll clean up the excess gravel and millings, make sure that all gets grassed over. Kim had some ideas for wildfires on portions of that, a friendship circle with some of the existing stones that we have down there. Again, just wanna thank everybody. It's just, and I was told somebody's already down there walking on it, on the tackiness of it, so.
They're walking, they're very walking. And did they do a small roller to compact that in?
They did. So there's a layer of millings underneath there that our guys were responsible for. Streets Department primarily. I don't want to leave anybody out because there's a lot of, a lot of folks that were responsible for doing the heavy lifting on it. Mount has been beyond generous with the time and resources that they've contributed to this. Some things that, as far as leveling out the ground, that they could have charged us for and they were just very generous on, on those aspects. But to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
So for the sake of time, Mayor, we've got two briefings. First off, I'd like to introduce Karen Coburn. She's our local partnership specialist from the U.S. Census. And she's gonna give her, Commissioner Parks, introduction. My speech is gonna give a little bit of background on the census and the impact for our community.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner.
Well, glad you're here. Were you at our last meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Well, I, I've really gone on the soapbox for census.
Awesome.
I mean, truthfully, I, we have a full house. We had a full house that night. And I tried to impress upon them and students that the census is vitally important to small-town America. It's, it's important to everyone, but all kinds of funding, grants, you name it, are related to the census. And too many people like voting. It just, you know, think it's not important to fill it out, it's not currently counted. It's vital that they be counted, you know, for, for our economic development in this whole area. The census is an important factor, a very important factor. So you're among friends here in your presentation.
Thank you. I will talk a little bit about some other factors that might go into helping people understand the importance of census. But I do thank you today for allowing me the time to speak with you. I'm with, again, the U.S. Census Bureau. I'm a partnership specialist for Boyd, Carter, Greenup, and Lawrence Counties here in the Northeastern Kentucky. And, um, what I'm hoping to do is have you all consider and maybe pass a resolution to form a complete count committee for the City of Ashland. This is regarding the decennial census. That is a constitutional requirement that's established in Article One, Section Two of the Constitution. So the census must occur every ten years and a year ending in zero, according to our Constitution. And the very first one took place in seventeen ninety when Thomas Jefferson was the Secretary of State. And at that time, the population in the United States was three point nine million people. Federal marshals rode on horseback to go and do that count. So we've come a little ways away from that, so we don't, we don't go out on horseback anymore. But we do still want to count every person living in the United States. The primary purpose is to determine based on population how many seats each state will have in the House of Representatives. Kentucky's is set to stay the same, but the state of Ohio may lose a seat in the House of Representatives. That's what they're estimating at this time because of a decrease in their population. We will do this through twenty twenty, starting in February of twenty twenty and go through basically till June, but by December thirty-first then of twenty twenty, we will release the results to the President of the United States so that he can look at apportionment there and from that level. And then, once that happens, after that, we send, release to the states, you know, later than April first of twenty twenty-one. And that's so they can also look at redistricting. And redistricting goes around everything from congressional, senate, voting, and, and school districts even, is what the states will look at. The data will also then be available to the public at that time. Though Kentucky, as if, we're expecting to see an increase in our area, we are expecting to show decreases in our population. But Kentucky as a whole should see an increase. I would like to at least make sure that we're counting everybody in our area to make sure that if that, if there is a reduction, that it's actually a true reduction in population. Census data determines, as you mentioned, everything from funding, states, counties, communities, nonprofits, infrastructure, the roads, and that comes through about six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars a year through the federal government. And, um, it's, it's not just about the money, it's our civic duty, because again, where it's constitutionally mandated, we should be making sure we respond to the census. So we really need to educate people that it's not an option and it's not just something where the government's trying to nosy in. But there's a huge benefit for every one of us that comes from this. Whether you're, you have children that are going to school or you use medical facilities, all of that. If you're driving on our roads, that census data is something that's important. And, um, and it, you know, they turn everything into statistical data when it's received. And I say that purposely because the data gathered and used by us is confidential and secure because this is another thing that most people are concerned about is, you know, what, if we're asking this information, what are we gonna do with this information? And so I wanna make sure that it's understood that there are many layers in place through regulations and law that protects the confidentiality of the information for seventy-two years. So the census data cannot be tracked back to an individual person or business. That seventy-two years is considered a lifespan. And so we have people who are doing genealogy who are very excited about twenty twenty-two because nineteen fifty census data will be open and they can then look back and use that as proof that someone lives where they said they were living in sometime. My understanding is it takes three pieces of documentation to prove lineage. And so the census data is very important to people doing genealogy. As a person who is employed by the Census Bureau, we take that oath of office and take that very seriously. And if we violate that oath of office, it's for a lifetime. And if we violate it, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine and about two, five years in prison. So, I, I don't wanna go prison. But anyway, the goal for the twenty twenty census is to make sure we count every person once, only once, and in the right place. We celebrate the census on April first of twenty twenty. As I mentioned earlier though, things will be, things are happening now, but we'll go through starting in February doing counts for people living in group settings. So if they're in a nursing facility or they're living in a college campus, we are counting people at that time in February. Then in March, the general release, a general invite goes out to all the households in the United States. And at that point, resident, or, well, people can respond to the census at that time. And they can still do that with phone, they can use a telephone, they can use the written and mail-in census response. Or this year is the first time that they will be able to do an online response with the census. So we're very excited about that opportunity and we think that will also help reduce some of the low response. Talking about low response scores, within Boyd County, there are two census tracts that have a low response rate. A low response score is estimated based on twenty-ten mail-back response rates and from the twenty-twelve to twenty-sixteen American Community Survey responses. So though every census tract could show improvement, those with rates greater than twenty percent are what we consider to be at particular risk for an undercount. So Census Track three oh eight along Route sixty from Ashland out into the county is at a rate of twenty-one point four percent. And then Census Track three oh two, which is downtown Ashland, has a twenty-five point nine percent low response score. The George Washington University did a study and it's based on data from sixteen large federal assistance programs. They found that for every person missed in the state of Kentucky, we lose two thousand twenty-one dollars per person, per year, for ten years. So that undercount is huge for us here in Ashland. The twenty twenty census, as I mentioned before, will be easier and more secure than ever. So we're hoping that the online response allows some improvement in that because they will be able to answer on their phone as well as on a laptop, a computer, mail-in phone, telephone, if they wanna call in to be old school. I don't know if there are too many people out of the dial phones anymore, but that's very possible. And if they're uncomfortable with any of those processes, we will still have enumerers who go out door to door for anyone who has missed responding to the census. And they will be carrying, rather than the gigantic packs of paperwork, they will be carrying electronic handheld devices this time to help, again, become more efficient with getting those responses in. And because we value the time of the people, we wanna make sure that it takes no more than ten minutes. So that's one of our commitments is to making sure, it takes about ten minutes to complete the survey. So quick and painless. As you can guess, it's a huge undertaking to count every person living in the United States. And so that's why we're asking for your help. You are the community. You are the face of the community. You know or can work together to find out why people may not complete the survey or why they may not understand why it's important to complete the survey. So we need your assistance in helping educate, encourage, and engage everyone when it comes to the twenty twenty census. We wanted to spell miss. We wanted to spell any concerns. One of the groups that was undercounted in the twenty-ten census was children under five. And that was to the tune of over one million. And in the state of Kentucky, it was eight thousand approximately that were missed. So if you think about a decennial census, that's twenty-ten, they weren't counted, they were five or younger. We're in twenty twenty, they're fifteen now, fourteen. And they've gone to grade school, middle school, and now are we prepared for them to go into high school? So you can see the importance of why we really need to make sure we're, we're encouraging people to participate. So how can we help? First, we are hiring. So there are plenty of census jobs out there. They are hiring now and they'll be hiring into, into the census for different positions. We will have two area census offices. One will be in Lawrence, uh, Lawrence County. Louisville and the other will be in Lexington. But they will hire people to work remotely from their home in our area. And so that's, I live here in Boyd County and in Ashland and, that's, I, I work from my home office to make sure that we're, we're getting a local person to reach out to our area.
And how do people, how do citizens work?
We have, they can go on USAjobs.gov. And there's also an eight-hundred number that we will, we can share that we can get word out. We've been delivering that out to different places. But it's an eight-hundred number that they can call and that's our recruiting hotline. And they can share the resume and be hired for different positions. The pay is very, very well, very well reimbursed for your time, even though it is a temporary job. And so, and they have pool and court positions available, but they do pay well for the time that you're working. The other thing that we are looking at is the formation of complete count committees. Governor Bevin has put one together at the state level. But we are looking to communities, cities, counties, nonprofits, education, other groups to put together their own complete count committees to help out, do outreach to their communities that they serve. And so we are hoping that, again, the City of Ashland will be willing to participate with that and help us motivate and direct the community around the twenty twenty census. As your partnership specialist, I will work with your CCC as you determine the best path forward for the city and making connections and gathering of information. Once you form a CCC, you can determine the primary contact, put them in touch with me, and I will work with them as they figure out who they want to put on that committee. And I will take that committee then through a training and then serve as the advisor as we count down to April twenty twenty. I thank you very much for your time and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The number is one eight five five J O B twenty twenty for the job. Recruiting hotline. Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you, appreciate it. Will you be putting like something in the paper, like a big ad in the paper about all this?
They will probably, they will probably put the job opportunities in the paper. There will be some articles written. City Manager Gracie and I have spoken around the, the complete count committees. There may be some partnership along with the county. And he has spoken about maybe spearheading some information in the news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Chief Police, Mayor Commissioners. It's in an effort to continue to provide you all updates, put up your own specific directors, departments. Chief's gonna give a hand or report some information about the police department.
I just wanna give you all a little bit of a brief, maybe just some history of the department that you may not know about, just a little bit to provide information. But at the same time, kinda give you an idea of what's been going on for the last three years within the department. Before y'all started the meeting, I, I had a slideshow going on with different activities and involvement with our, with our members of the department, whether it's interacting with the community or actually on the job. So, really proud of the department. They're really going at it basically as hard as they can to improve the quality of life in our community. Just to give you an idea, eighteen fifty-eight is when the department was created. It was started with town marshals. Through the changes in state laws and professionalizing law enforcement in Kentucky, chiefs of police were established in eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety-four with the last town marshal becoming a chief of police and current today. So we've had quite a bit of change throughout the, our, our hundred and sixty-one year this year life of the department. So basically, an unfortunate thing that we have is line of duty test. The Ashland Police Department has six confirmed officers that were established as killed on the line of duty. The last one in nineteen thirty-seven. There are among more than twenty-one thousand names that are currently etched on the wall in the National Memorial in DC. Today, we're in a new facility. I say it's still, it's still new. Very modern from where we were at ten years ago. And again, we're one of the leading agencies in Kentucky, a leader, especially on the northeast side of the state as we're the largest on the east of I seventy-five. So today, we have an authorized strength of forty-eight officers. One of the proud things that as a department and the leader is that we have really, in the last couple of years, initiated a stronger community policing attitude. And again, a small acronym is AIPAC, Ashland Police and Citizens Together. And we have really, really embraced this attitude. We, we were very community oriented for years, but we have young officers, we have officers that are motivated and really wanna be involved in the community. And they want to strengthen those relations between them and the citizen. We need to be making positive impacts with our citizens, trying to improve the quality of life. We think that we're making headway. We go through that for quality versus quantity. You can write a bunch of citations, you can write a bunch or arrest a lot of people, but you still have to communicate with, with your citizens in the community. The message to our officers, every day you have the opportunity to go out and make change or make a positive impact on someone in the community. That's their goal. And at the end of this presentation, I'll show you most recent activity that I'm extremely proud of and that right there, that last statement I made about they have the opportunity to go out and make change, they can do it. Our goal, of course, being more efficient and effective in our customer service, the stronger relationships and partnerships within the community, accountability on our agency. Not just individually, but as an agency, we have to work together and that's all the way from the top to the bottom. We're always in the reduced crime rate concept and trying to keep recidivism down to a minimum. Creativity and innovation. As you see, a lot of things that we post on Facebook, these officers really think outside the box. And kudos to them and they should be empowered to do that. Improved officer, officer morale, I can tell you right now, I think it's the highest it's ever been. It advances our strategic plan and of course our increased public safety through our partnership is pretty obvious. Future of the department is, you know, activities include traffic enforcement. It reduces traffic collisions, it's just not crimes. But you get reduction in traffic collisions, you reduce injuries and property damages. That makes a big difference on insurance. We use different approaches. It's called data-driven approaches to criminal activities and merge that in with our traffic. We're seeing that every day. How do criminals get somewhere? Usually in a car. What do they do? They break the traffic law. And you gotta go beyond the ticket and, and make a difference there. We have new approaches and strategies to drug enforcement. We've established different tactics, different associations with neighboring agencies, both state, local, and federal partners. Probably the, the best it's been in a long time. Technology improvements, interaction with community. Of course, I think our biggest issue or our biggest benefit right now is how we use Facebook to communicate with our citizens. But we also have an app and, and we also have a website. We're also on Twitter and Instagram for some of the younger people. I don't know how it works. We're trying to provide the most updated training. We're getting some training. We're recognized as a leader in northeast Kentucky. We're starting to get some training that we've probably never had opportunity to get. We're not just training in Kentucky, we're training in West Virginia and Ohio. We're partnering with them and some of their training opportunities and, and working together and establishing those partnerships. We're partnering with them and some of their training opportunities and working together and establishing those partnerships. Of course, you know, when you're, when you're establishing a relationship with other agencies, it's a force multiplier. One of the big announcements we're going to have here soon is the construction of a substation in partnership with community development. Chris Pullum and I've been, and DJ Reimer have been working over the past couple of weeks. I'll have a slide here in just a second to give you an idea as to where we're at on that process. Some of the statistics I want to show you, calls for service, kind of up and down, but still maintaining around twenty-eight to thirty thousand calls a year. Had a big spike there in the middle in twenty seventeen. But we're on the move constantly, averaging about eighty or more calls a day. Traffic citations, if you're going from right to left, twenty sixteen, we've had an increase. And with the increase in traffic citations, we know that we have problems with stop signs and red lights and speeding. And we are starting to really make a difference and identifying locations where, you know, selective enforcement needs to be, needs to be initiated. But also, if you look, traffic crashes reduce the correlation to that. So, in twenty sixteen, we were over nine hundred and fifty. And then as today, we've reduced, we, excuse me, or over nine hundred and twenty, we've reduced that by eight hundred and forty-four. The initiative seems to be helping not just in Ashland, but across the state. Some of those numbers are reducing along with the town. So, there is a correlation with citations, but they have to be good quality citations. Just criminal arrests, citations, as you can see, from twenty sixteen, from seventeen hundred or more, over to beyond three thousand. And I'm telling you, these men and women are going at it and going at it hard. I just, I want to brief you on that one picture. There on the right, Kobe Clark, one of our younger officers, that's him giving a bicycle back to solving the bicycle theft. Giving it back to the young man. So, really diligent and even the smallest crime makes the biggest difference.
Well, it's against you, it's a big crime.
No, it could be, it could be equivalent to a homicide, the smallest crime can be that way. When it comes to narcotics, there's an idea of what we're getting. We're both getting firearms with narcotics. Our drug arrests from sixteen to eighteen has risen over two hundred and thirty-three percent. Thankful to the force multiplier, the assistance from other agencies, federal agencies, some of our strategies and tactics, but those have improved. Shoplifting is a significant arrest, but today, we're starting to see more and more other crimes related to it. We make shoplifting arrests, some of them have narcotics and have a warrant on them. So, those, those numbers stay pretty consistent. Warrants, we're seeing a very large spike in warrant arrests right now. It's unfortunate that people are not returning to court or not showing up or not advising, you know, what they're supposed to do at the judge's direction. So, we're serving a lot and a lot of warrants here in Wood County and there, and there are other warrants from other, other states and other counties. Impaired driving arrests, those are becoming more complicated as we speak. It's not just the impaired driver on the alcoholic beverage that you smell. Now, we have the impaired driver on narcotics and it is a whole lot harder to identify. And we're getting the training that we need to identify on the roadside that goes beyond just alcohol as for narcotic impairment. Total arrests, as you can see, again, it's double, in my opinion. I see it every day and there's nothing I can say anymore than I can see sometimes two or three officers at the jail at a time. That's how busy we are. Some of the, there's a vast majority or a vast description of kind of narcotics, but what seems significant in our particular area is heroin, meth, or methamphetamine, opiates, and marijuana. Going from sixteen on the right to the left, as you can see, the spike in the, in the heroin and then it goes down. You can see what we're dealing with today. From methamphetamine, it was low, it was kind of in the middle as to where heroin is now versus it's a spike now and it's our primary narcotic that we're having to deal with right now.
Chief, where do you think the primary location is that it's, it's originating? I don't think Columbia, but I mean, within, within our regional area, a couple hundred miles. Do we, do we find that there is maybe more focus on a particular city, north of us?
At first, it was, you know, basically focused around Detroit. But based on the expansion and the types of narcotics and the different groups that are involved, we're starting to see Atlanta, we're starting to see Columbus. Today, Chicago has been, has been a source. We're starting to see Indianapolis, we're starting, and of course, you know, Huntington has become equal to that, unfortunately. But we're partnering with them because they're dealing with the same people we are. So, it fostered around this one city, I think, I think in the very beginning, now it's expanded. Opiates, basically, our pain pills or pain medication kind of started low and we started tracking some things and basically, they started hitting in with the laws on restricting and how they came up from Florida and they started taking down pain clinics and things of that nature. So, very, very rarely do we see any more of a pain medication. Marijuana, still believe it's a gateway drug. As you can see, from twenty sixteen to now, look at the increase in the marijuana arrests. We're not only just seeing it in, you know, small individual usages, but we're seeing in large quantities. Like one of the last big, big quantities that we had, had a, had an incident, just a normal, well, I don't say normal, but at a call for a domestic call. And we're covered almost a pound and a half of marijuana out of that. So, it is, it is upon return. It's, I don't think it's going anywhere and it has some potency to it today and we'll, we'll still continue to treat it as part of our problem here in our community. As I said, over the past year, we recently, or we basically have ratified the collective bargaining agreement thanks to the negotiations. We feel that now we're competitive with other agencies in hiring and retention. There was a, there was a big issue that it's hard to, hard to recruit in competing against some other agencies our side. We were recently recognized as one of fifteen agencies in Kentucky with a rating of a hundred percent for safety and liability. Again, I mentioned the two hundred and thirty-three percent increase in drug arrests over a three-year period. Another program that we're proud of is the Angel Program. Individual that might be in crisis, narcotic crisis, can come and seek help rather than going to jail, which doesn't give a solution to the problem.
And how's that going?
As we speak, we've had two and the two that we didn't have. So, like I said, if we get no more, then, you know, that's fine. If we get one more, that's fantastic. But it is starting to spread across not only in Kentucky, but in the United States, these programs. And again, a new police substation to enhance community relations. This won't be for law enforcement, it'll be for all city departments. It'll be something that we can go down and interact with the community, whether it be code enforcement, whether it be economic development or streets or sanitation. It has every opportunity to be a location to where we can meet and tackle issues in our community. Again, I mentioned the initiative that three officers had just a few weeks ago. The young man, as you see on the left, he had a makeshift homemade basketball goal. These three officers got together, give credit to also to Bill Pinson at Walmart. Very community oriented, he's, he's, he's just a great partner with us. And they were able to get a real basketball goal for him. This not only hit local news, but one of the news stations transferred it to CBS. This thing got over five and a half million views. And then went off, to me, it went worldwide. Since then, I've seen two other agencies that tried to do it, where they actually went out and bought it. And they tried to do something on Facebook. I always say duplication is a form of flattery, in my opinion. But it was these officers that made that decision initiative. And again, kudos to them. Just to give you an idea of the, the substation, we've been working for a couple of weeks trying to narrow down some properties that the city possesses at this time that may benefit us in a particular area of town. We're trying to get to finalize that, kind of give you an idea of footprint where this will be. But again, we've said it's mobile. You know, if we can, if we can resolve a problem in one particular area, we can move it to another. So, we're well on track and I think, Chris, and I've been talking, we have two or three locations there at the end. We think an area around Railroad Street, a piece of property that we have, the west can just kind of fit right in and be perfect. So, that, that is moving forward very fast. And final, I couldn't get out of here without saying, one of our next activities with the community is our DEA Take Back Program, which is Saturday, October twenty-seventh. Take back all unused or old or unwanted medication, bring them on down. It's a free pass, you don't get to go to jail for carrying somebody's medicine or illegally or whatever. But breathe down, it's disposed of properly, environmentally friendly. You don't flush it down the toilet, you don't just bury them in the backyard or anything, it becomes poison. It's taken and destroyed environmentally safe. So, I'll tell you any questions that you have.
Well, I appreciate your presentation and we'll stay in touch with you daily. And I like to see it put with the public and appreciate all the facets for ABD, you know. And I do wish they'd smile a little bit more when you're passing the bar.
We're, we've been working on it.
You know how many years I've been saying that? Every, every since I've been elected official. And some of these guys I had in school, well, no, they're retired now. Now that I think about it. But when, when they were still working, no, they'd always, you know, because they knew me really well. But I just think that our police department is, is actually outstanding, we're very proud of them. And I think sometimes, especially in small town America, you know, you don't have to have such a, and I could say this to several of them, I'm pretty close to them, and I'd say, hey, come on, not this stern look off. You're in a police car, you got a suspect, you're armed, you're protecting us, you're important to us, you know all that. You can smile away with people. I think it goes a hundred miles if they would do more of that and I'll say it every chance I get. But we, you know, we know who they are and they're, they're very important to safety for us. So, they can do that. It doesn't lower their intimidation factor. Now, there are certain areas, maybe they should stay pretty stern, don't get me wrong. But by and large, that's always something that's kind of been important to me.
Major Conley's heard me say this before, you can get more with honey than you can vinegar.
Absolutely.
When you're talking to a suspect or a witness that goes, I don't want one.
Well, I've had school kids before, you know, you can hear them talking, if they were on the corner waiting on the bus, they'd warn the policeman, wave at them, big deal. I mean, that meant something to them. And they weren't on the other side like me thinking, you know, most time they act too serious about everything. They're just saying it was important to them that police were waving at them. So, I think they need to keep that in mind, especially with younger, young people.
Got that right.
Oh, right. He's not one of them, he's, he's one of them I've talked about that always waves and talks. Of course, he's heard this from me several times, I think, over the years. I just think, I think it's an important thing.
Can you have those graphics put on your old Facebook page to give to the public? I think those are, I think what the mayor was saying about getting the information back out to the community, I think that's, that's information I think that the public would appreciate.
Lieutenant West was working on the full, the full yearly report. It's just not statistics, it's some of these other activities. So, we'll post it, post it as a whole book and make it available online. And then when he gets some of the other data, we'll put some stuff on the page.
Where is it specifically on Railroad Street you're going to put the substation?
Looking right around the three thousand block. So, there's a couple of properties there that we think that we can get at least all of those boxes on one of the two. So, I think we've got some work to do, house located on the property, the setback and things of that nature. And maybe make some room to be able for parking or people to pull in and meet there.
I know the neighborhood would be real pretty sensitive to this.
I'm really, excuse me, really pleased about that project because that, that whole thing came out of a meeting that was set up in that neighborhood, asking that neighborhood, what is it that you want from, from the city? And that's exactly what they said. And so, I think to see all of that come to fruition is a job well done for everybody who's worked on that project to say, to, to hear a citizen concern, several citizen concerns and say, this is what we're going to do to move forward on that. So, kudos.
Yeah, we, we had a substation up there years ago, but it got torn down as a part of another piece of property. And economic development has been down there. So, we've been kind of looking and thanks to Chris's group, they were, they were able to transform some activity and some money to, to that position, so.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate it. Regards to the department. Okay, at this point in our meeting, it's public participation. If you have issue, concern, complaint, you'd like to bring before the board, it's time to do it. Give your name, address, and hold comments by minutes or less.
That's hard to do for an educator.
Know you well.
Yeah, I'm Carol Allen, the director of the Hollis Museum and Discovery Center. And I appreciate the opportunity to come, having been making my usual visits. Things are pretty busy over there. But I do want to say, in conjunction to what Chief said.
Every customer is on the new water line right now.
Okay, and so, we feel like the thirty-five thousand was paying for covered liquidated damages and all that.
I'm good. Back to liquidated damages. Does the contractor, did the contractor at any point damage or possibly hit our existing water lines causing outages?
Yeah, there were actually a number of hits on our water lines. Some were unmarked, like services that we weren't even aware that were there, that may have served old abandoned houses, things like that. And it's, I think there was one or two where it's just an accidental damage, but the majority of them were unmarked services.
So, it was all our fault?
I wouldn't say all, there's a couple that were, that were, they accidentally hooked a line that was actually marked properly.
So, do we, in instances that the issue is not our fault, do we hold the contractor accountable for the cost and damages incurred for the outages and inconvenience to our citizens?
It's, it's really hard to put a number on damage and inconvenience to citizens. We hold them responsible for repair and getting it back.
So, they do, so the cost of the repair is covered by the contractor?
They have insurance.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that a little bit more of what Commissioner brought up. Do we, do we know that one of the accidents, obviously nobody did it on purpose, but one of the accidents that had the flooding problem out there, was that one of them?
No, that was a. No, that was, we were actually switching over to the new line, filling it. And whenever you're opening and shutting valves, it must have created a water hammer on the system and it just, the old line blew. They weren't digging anywhere near it.
So that was our responsibility?
Well, it's, it's just an old fragile line. And when you're opening and shutting water and filling new lines, it's, it hammers the system no matter how cautious you are.
You can say it was our responsibility.
Yeah. It's not the contractor's fault.
We're willing to accept that. And we have insurance for that. So we're, I'm sure we're, our insurance office is handling that.
I'll arrange with the risk manager and they'll go through the proper procedure.
And that has, that has started?
On that specific case, has Mike here? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics about that one, like where it is in the process, but I'm, I'm sure it is going through the claims process.
Will you check with him since it was utility line and send us an email or something?
Yes.
Again, when somebody like Chief, let's go to Chief, like there's a bicycle, that's the biggest problem in Nashville that day. And if you've got flooded basement in one of your neighborhoods, it's a big problem.
And more than once?
Huge problem. And especially with the individual, but for, for everybody involved, it kind of keeps up on that one. Anybody have anything else on the potential agenda?
May I have a point of inquiry on item eight?
Yes.
Okay. The, we are asking to close the street for...
Cheryl, I gotta ask you to come out.
I'm sorry.
Well, that and, you know, want the court to get it, but we just, we thought about our meetings.
I wasn't sure what the...
More formal.
Okay, all right. On item eight, I just have a point of inquiry. I never asked to close the street before and I was kind of hit last minute to make the decision on the $825 cost. I'm, I've, that kind of floored me. I didn't really understand what it is. I certainly understand and would be willing to pay, you know, the salaries of the officers or the police, whatever, but to me it was exponential. Is there any way I can have a waiver or a reduction in cost of that to increase my profit?
We've been through waiver requests throughout the past year and we haven't been granting those for a lot of reasons. But what we'd ask you, when you come to us over gifts and contributions in the budget for next year, and you intend to do this again, and you need to include that amount in it, am I right, Commissioner?
Yeah, that's the way we...
You include that amount for next year in that to allow us to review it and maybe approve it then, then you don't have to hit up and ask about them.
Okay. This was a, this was a late add-on, so it's gotten something.
This is street, street department and police officers. There's a little more entails than it's over time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioners, on paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. New business. Item eight.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute agreement between the City of Asheville and Building Crafts Inc. accepting their proposal in the amount of $75,728.74 to remove and replace the underdrain filter six A with Department of Utilities Division of Water Treatment Plant, declaring an emergency to exist to allow two readings of this ordinance on the same day.
I think all of us have been brought up to speed on this with the water plant we've been working on for a couple of years, I guess. Any questions? All things... Aye, close like sign. Item B.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to accept the proposal from Silent Water Solutions USA Inc. in the amount of $25,789 for the purchase of filter, underdrain filters and services at the water treatment plant for the Department of Utilities, declaring an emergency to exist to allow two readings of this ordinance on the same day.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. Any... I'll just stop right there and, and, and Commissioner Perkins, we're initially bringing up fiscal notes. It's good for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's good for us. We're in the middle of it all the time down here. And it's good for our public to be able to see what, what the heck is, what, you know, what's going on. And I, I mean, that's a good, good job for us on, on staying not only transparent, but helping all of us keep, keep track of things better.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item C.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to accept the proposal from Barton and Lucetic.
Huh? The wankers will be... How about, how about I tell you I was waiting for this today?
I do. I thought if I went really fast...
You missed her magnetite, so you get this one.
I thought if I went really fast, I'm still going to...
Did you make that up?
Well, my Italian is a little rusty, but that's, that's where I...
The way you said it, it sounded like you, you know, maybe you had it in your winnings or something, but I just have to think you made that up.
I looked at it and thought if I make it up and go really fast, no one will stop me, but I was wrong.
Okay, sorry.
Proposal from Barton and Lucetic in the amount of $30,000 for the water treatment plant filter failure investigation for the Department of Utilities, declaring an emergency to exist to allow two readings of this ordinance on the same day.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. File adoption.
Submove.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item D.
We need to do A and B second, we didn't do...
Oh.
I wondered if we were going to get there.
Yeah. Out of A, most suspend rules.
Submove. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. File adoption.
Submove. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. Same for item B. Item B, most suspend rules.
Submove. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. File adoption.
Submove.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
When, when we, you have to do that on emergency items. We don't have a lot of emergency items. And usually they are, they have something to do with water, either a water line, this has to be the water plant, sewer line, sewer plant, it could be police and fire, but we, we don't do them often, but you have to have three readings of that. And it gives people, the flag goes up or maybe somebody needs to ask about it or whatever, but it's extremely transparent. We're, we're trying to get to the bottom of a couple of issues in our water plant as quickly as possible, have the consultants come in and get a better course of direction on, on repairing a couple of things. Our water, the quality is not, is not the issue. The potential issue is the volume, because at this time of the year, we're fine. We, we can do seven, eight million gallons a day. Very, very big deal for a city our size, but we're a regional water supplier. But summertime comes, the next month or two, we get into, we may need as much as 15 to 20 billion in any given day, because all of your worship cars and watering your lawn. You just do more water, warm weather. We, we can do that. And we just want to make sure that we are able to keep those levels up with some of the issues in our water plant. Okay? And these, these are all interrelated to filter system at the water plant. Item D.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, adopting the job description for the position of GIS technician in the Department of Engineering, amending the authorized positions to add the position of GIS technician, total staff to continue not to exceed four, and amending the authorized positions, eliminating one technician to position, increasing equipment operator by one position in the Department of Public Services, Division of Street Maintenance of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Submove. Have second?
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item B.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Asheville, Kentucky and Dixon Engineering Inc. regarding their contract for engineering inspection services for coating, painting and repairing the one named Gallon Steel Reservoir, Cabbinsburg Water Storage Tank by increasing the contract in the amount of $15,717.98 for the Department of Utilities.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? This is pre-information we own in Cabbinsburg water system. So that's why, okay, and you'll see things on here that we're spending money in Cabbinsburg because we own the system. On paper?
Aye.
Close like sign. Item E.
An ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Asheville, Kentucky and Network Innovation Solutions in the amount of $24,875.69 for the purchase and installation of an active directory system for the connection of the new technology infrastructure.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, Ron, this, this isn't related, because I'm reading in the business one of the current project budget will accommodate the change order amount. So the total project budget is?
This is in addition to the 249,000 that was approved before, Commissioner. We, when we explained this initially, we talked about saving $112 a month compared to what we're doing right now. This will take those monthly savings down to $507 a month. And since you opened it up, I, I need to say that us calling this a phone system upgrade is a huge...
Hey, thanks for coming.
Understatement of what we're getting done. I'm prepared to go into some of the details if you all want me to dive into those, now I can. But this is really a dramatic change in our ability with fiber optics across the city. It does, the genesis for the whole issue was the terrible phone service we have for our customers right now, also internal problems that we're having. You're on the phone call and you just get cut off. So we are switching servers. We are getting fiber optics across the city. It has huge impacts on our, our ability to be secure. A couple of the other things we get with it is, and the call queueing, as I mentioned before, call parking, call routing. We have mobile workforce, which allows us to promote accessibility and voicemail by city workers. An expandable unified system at every COA location. But the bottom line is this is, is required to have the full capabilities on this system.
So the 24,875, that's absorbed into the existing project budget? Is that what I'm reading?
No, this is on top of. So the original...
So we're at the 200 and...
249 plus 24 about.
And what did we budget for? I mean, what's, I understand what you're saying. The line says current project budget will accommodate change order amount.
What we're getting back, what we've currently budgeted for with our current underperforming system, what we pay today, I tied it to the 249, I apologize. I see what you're saying now. That we're paying more than that on a month-to-month basis for equipment that we don't need or go use. I'm sorry, I was tying that to the original budget amount.
So we need the company, the installer, whatever, at least two there out over here. But we've been ready for it today. I don't know though, if, if you can do it in a nutshell, but at some point in time when we're underway for, for newspapers' benefit and the public's benefit to understand...
Because I think there's the misconception that we're spending 200 and now $275,000 on new phones.
We'd like to come out.
And it's far beyond new phones. Because I think, I think the public, that's the perception is...
And we appreciate being here. Scotty, my name's Stiles, do you want?
A lot of this...
And you are?
I'm Scott Martin, but then I S.
His father was one of the greatest mayors of the city of Manhattan.
Thank you.
Let me, let me give you a...
This room means a lot to me, so...
It means a lot to me. I served with him. So give you a, a very little caveat to move into this, but as Commissioner Park's saying, people think we're paying $40 million for the phone system.
Right.
When everybody else, you gotta say this, don't have landlines anymore.
Right.
For the most part. So what do y'all do in the city? Well, give, we want to get them out. But, but I know one thing, what's stimulating this, just so you know, looking into our phone system, then all of a sudden you open it up and say, oh, God. But basically what it's brought to head for us is residents constantly calling us. Calls yesterday, they call, I'm not signaling anybody, I call our department and for 45 minutes and they even get a busy signal or it just rings.
I think the bottom line for all events, we want to know that you called the city building and you actually get the person and get somewhere within the phone system because it doesn't happen right now.
As the minimum is going to roll over, like when we're calling a doctor's office or somebody and eventually say, you're number five, you're number six, stay on the line or something like it. I'm gonna let you go from there.
Well, and I can address it in a nutshell. I mean, I'm gonna turn it over to the text because they're wasteful.
Yeah.
But here's, here's the deal. The phone system really is like the icing on the cake to everything else we're doing. We are in the process of rebuilding or actually building, generally had an infrastructure with networking. That's what this server is addressing so that your all's communication is better. If your communication is better, everybody calling in here, their communication's going to be better as well. But to, to call in a phone system, and I, I get that's what this has, that's a real small part of it. What we've gotten into as we've gone is, you know, there, there are 17 facilities we are wiring, okay, and fixing. We've done 15. The last two are the police station, which is next week, and then after that's complete, we'll be here. Now, to say they're asleep, they're not, they are ready to switch over. We've installed in 15 sites. Mill Street was a huge deal, because it was all brand new and we had to change a lot of things. We kind of expect that. What we're finding each place is we really are cleaning up a lot of stuff and making it a lot better for you all.
Scott can interject one thing on that. And part of the historical challenge is that departments worked independently in the past. A department had a system that worked for them and it wasn't synchronized across the city. And so all types of inherent problems come in. It's just a hodgepodge of different stuff out there. And Franklin Active Director, which I know we all will get to, was, part of that was the assumption that we had some type of functioning active director. We don't. And so this synchronizes, I just wanted to provide that historical...
And you've never had that. So I'll, I'll turn it over and you guys can ask them questions, but it really is far more than a phone system. And for the first time, you have a real network, you have real security, you have a, you have an infrastructure you've never had.
Does that mean all Smith Corona's route?
They're gone, they're gone.
Muckfield, do you know what that is now?
It's Alan, you're putting him in the museum. Just saying a little bit.
Scotty. One, one name of this, though, in not calling it a phone system, and I'll give Major Connolly and the team, I asked for a bumper sticker name on what this is. Now, whole internet network solution or systems wins. So when we're talking this upgrade, we're calling it wins. You get the point. But it's, it's more than just...
And Tyron Perry and Chris Starkey with me as well, they're engineers. If you have specific questions or if you want...
We don't own that for specific questions. So just some of the things a manager ran through here, in your prospectus or whatever it is you're already working on, not prospectus, but like maybe, you know, when our biggest problem was people not being able to get anybody in the city building, or in the water works, or water department, or sewer department, or whatever the case may be, you, you might just nutshell what kind of the thorough of services we're going to have.
My name's Tyron Perry. Any... System that we put together will do the things that you're going to ask for it to do. But it will go beyond that. You will have connectivity throughout all the sites that we've matched. It will give the ability to manage those sites. It will make that a lot easier. It will also make it centralized. It will also secure those systems. I mean, your security posture is one of the things that we looked at, we're trying to increase for. Some of the initiatives and policy that you, that the city manager himself is currently coming up with and is writing, you'll be able to implement those through the centralized system. We are also looking to, with this particular server, virtualize your current environment on the server side. So in a sense, it's also a server upgrade for the current infrastructure that you do have. I do know that you do have some servers here, either physical hardware, some of them may be end of life, needing some refreshing. We'll be able to import those into this virtual environment, which will make them no longer hardware specific. So once you upgrade the hardware on the virtual system, you actually upgrade those servers also. It will give you the ability to synchronize your your central user base. What that means, we create a user for you through this active directory. The Cisco system that we're putting in for the phone system, it pulls off of that. You create a user for that, it creates a phone user also. We'll also build it so it synchronizes with your email and creates the email user also. The also benefit to that is if a user is compromised, a user leaves, you could one place essentially turn that off and that is propagated throughout the whole system. So what we're really trying to do is help you increase your security posture, help you implement policies that you have in paper, but to also implement those, I guess, through through the the systems themselves, meaning we'll just say you have a computer usage policy or internet usage policy. These kind of sites are appropriate for business, these are kind of sites for not. Through the active directory, we can help you to implement that where those policies are also out in practice. Your risk assessment, your risk assessment says, okay, these are areas of risk, these are the mitigating techniques that we want to use. We can help you implement that through that also. Your business impact analysis, if your business impact analysis says, hey, our RPOs or RTOs of this, we help to through active directory, which allows you to centralize centrally manage that, will help you to meet those goals.
So at some point when this is in service and ready to go, I guess you're gonna have interdepartmental training programs for everybody?
Yes.
Including Alex Fisher?
Yes.
So to add a little bit more doubt on some of the things Tyrone had said, so we making patches of software, excuse me, security patches makes this much easier to complement. The Office three sixty-five package that we bought about a year and a half ago. The Marocchi servers allow us to pinpoint exactly, hey, Gracie's on this website again, city policy should not be there. We know exactly when it was, how long it was, somebody's down on a website for thirty-five minutes on whatever inappropriate site. We'll know that.
And to state of inappropriate sites, if you find sites that you deem inappropriate, we can ban them altogether. For a certain population, I know we're talking with Officer Ron Conley. He talked about some sites that may be inappropriate for business aspects. One department may not be for theirs. We can also we can also make sure that those departments have access to the resources that may be.
That's a pretty good nutshell there.
I guess the only other question I would have, this may not be for you all, but what percentage of this two hundred and seventy-five thousand that we were basically authorizing for this expenditure is for the safety and security of the internet and phone versus the actual phone system? Because you said it's a very small part of that, so maybe to let the public know what the majority of our capital is being spent on versus the phone system itself?
That's a great question. I am not prepared to answer the actual budget and financial.
Would that be something finance or?
I mean, this was a part of the original bid. The I mean, this is about fifty lines of information. I can tell you about highlight.
I think just, I guess my question would be, what percentage of the total expenditure is going to go to the phone system, maybe what we're thinking of as the hold the phone or talk on the phone versus the safety and security of the phone system?
Go ahead and get that together.
And I and I not just for me, I think that I back to the Commissioner's point. I think the public assumes that we're gonna have gold phones in every building based on that cost. And the truth is, you know, a lot of the cost is probably on the backend infrastructure versus the actual front end, here's the phone.
That's it. And also, this is a sixty-month contract. So this gives us services, this gives us phone internet services.
And that makes sense to me as well, sure.
This is Chris Starkey. I think I'll let him speak.
I think you were just touching on it. So the phone system is sitting on top of this backend infrastructure, right?
That we didn't have.
That you did not have. So the backend infrastructure is necessary to even allow all the departments and entities to talk together. And so once that is in place, you know, we're able to use that infrastructure to then secure the environment and allow communications to take place. So it's it's very important that that is, you know, put in place before the phone system could ever be possible.
Thank you.
So I'm in here. I don't know why you're working around the city.
We did it also more background. We we got a pickup team that had put this together. Tom, Ryan, Jeremy, Susan, Michelle. These are regular attenders, attendees at these monthly sessions that we have with Network Innovation Solutions to make sure we're on the right vibe path. And we discover things every time we talk, you know, some of the finer details of the original phone list, for example, that we had, the type of hardware, some hardware is not necessary across the city, it's more expensive. And so we've made adjustments on that within the realm of this contract. And I appreciate all NIS has done to especially break things down to me to the elemental level when we talk some of the technical stuff. Because it does, mind my dumb, what I'm trying to not say now, but I appreciate it. So thank you all.
All favor?
Aye.
No sign of G?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized the Director of the Mayor to execute an amendment to Task Order two thousand eighteen number two between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and H D R Engineering, regarding the Phase Two Stormwater M S Forward Compliance Report in an additional amount of four thousand and sixty dollars for preparations and submission to the Kentucky Division of Water."
So move.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
No sign of H?
An ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky prohibiting throwing, placing, blowing, or allowing noxious weeds, ranked vegetation, grass clippings, or leaves upon any street, roadway, avenue, highway, or alley and or into any gutter, storm drain, or water source within the City of Ashland, providing a fine for the violation of this ordinance and repealing R O nineteen thirty-nine, section fourteen forty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
No sign of I?
An ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky closing an unapproved portion of Cedar Street located between Jenkin Street and Black Run Avenue and running parallel to Sixth Street in the City of Ashland, Kentucky.
So move.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
No sign of J?
An ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized the Director of the Mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Triple B Construction for the Fifth Street Livestation Renovation Project in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents for the Department of Utilities Division of Waste Water Collection.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
No sign of K?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized the Director of the Mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Southern Ohio Trenching and Escavating for the water line replacement on U S twenty-three from Forty-third Street, Nashland to Eleventh Street in Cappusburg in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Distribution."
Second.
Any discussion?
One question.
Okay.
Does the business affected in any way by the paving the state is doing or is this passed where the state?
No, the the state, the state has agreed to hold out that section of paving until we're done. And then they're gonna come in and pave after we're done.
That that was my biggest concern is that we we needed to do this before they paved that section.
And I'll but I'll go back to my point is the same question can be said from the water plant going into Ashland on that same street.
Yeah. Are we gonna replace before they pave?
No, that's that project, the design won't even be done until June, July.
So we're gonna dig up the building page?
We're at least a year and a half away from that project, but we'll have to discuss it in capital commission and private.
My my concern would be if we can avoid spending, I don't know how, what would you expect paving the street we will be digging up would cost the city in the future? From, I'm assuming, from the water plant to?
Forty-third.
No, to?
From Forty-third Street to Thirty-ninth Street. Thirty-ninth Street. I don't know what that would be. I would have.
What's the cost per square usually on paving?
He's gonna mic it up.
I'm trying.
I know that look.
It's about seven dollars a square foot. I'm trying to think of how wide the trench would be and where our corridor would be.
It's gonna say the corridor is not necessarily directly under twenty-three when this replacement goes on. Is that correct?
Yeah. Now, the replacement we're talking about between Thirty-ninth and Forty-third, we're gonna try to put it under the sidewalk as much as possible. So some of this might be a loop point, but there probably will be some impact to the highway that they just paved. But we're still at least a year and a half, two years away.
But we are, we are planning on getting that out from underneath twenty-three ultimately.
If if we can. We're looking at the different corridors right now that are feasible.
Excellent.
Ryan, what do we, what do we know about the KYTC, the paving of twenty-three?
It was around two, three months ago, I believe, was the first time they had told us.
And there, and from what I understand from the statement, they have a ten-year plan that they utilize to determine when streets get paved. Is that correct? So it wasn't, may, you may have been told three months ago, but they've had it on their their long-term plan.
Yeah, the other thing about that, they have a ten-year plan, they have a five-year plan, they have a two-year plan. And sometimes between the ten-year and the five-year, it gets changed, and between the five-year and the two-year, it gets changed. It's a moving target.
But my thought would be, as we move forward with our own long-term water line replacement plan, it would be in our best interest to coordinate with them to make sure that we're lining our projects up with their projects.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's an outstanding point, I would mention her. It's just if they, we have, we try to have the discussions with them.
Well, because it is fluid, though, if we know now we want to replace this section and we can say to them, we want to replace this section, and that's in their ten-year plan, then, you know, we can, it's a moving.
That's a point that we should have been aware of. We should have been known, you know, thinking about this all along with them. It's kind of like we, we're doing paving now out in the community and we'll turn around, not necessarily due to our fault of course, but we'll turn around, we'll be cutting up some new pavement because of a water leak or sewer leak or something. It just happens. And I always get questioned, did you realize that was old, an old line running through there? Well, you, yeah, no. Maybe we did, but you, you know, it's like, you don't picture a roof that's leaking. It looks pretty bad, but until it rains and leaks, you're not gonna be much with it. But on these major jobs like this that are in advance, for instance, back to the going towards Cappusburg and into Cappusburg with that line, and we're gonna vacate that six-inch line in the in the middle of the road underneath? How deep is that line?
It's about ten feet, most of the way.
So when we come over to run it, run it under or by the sidewalk in that vicinity?
It's, the twelve inch is already under the sidewalk there.
It's already there.
Yeah, and in the late nineteen eighties, they ran a twelve inch parallel to the six, but they left all the connections to the six, so we have two parallel lines, a really old one and a really new one.
Then tell me, tell me, are we gonna have to dig up the new asphalt up towards Cappusburg? If it's paved before we get to to that line? What do we have to do to that line that's already under the underneath there, the twelve inch line?
A lot of the side connections of water pipes still connect to the six-inch line. So we have to dig up all of those side connections and connect them to the twelve inch line so that we can abandon the six. And then all of the services, the house water services that are connected to the six inch in the middle of the road, we have to reconnect them to the twelve inch under the sidewalk.
Okay, well, the houses on the right side of the road, no problem. Aren't they already connected to the twelve?
Nope.
No, they're on the six.
They never, they never switch?
When they put the twelve through there, they never reconnected all the houses to the twelve. They actually left them connected to the old six in the middle of the highway.
Okay, they're not connected, but they're over there, but they'll follow the road. But you're talking about the road, the homes on the other side of railroad tracks?
Yeah, like a, there's a water line that comes out of Forty-seventh Street and a water line, I believe, that comes out of Bobby's Mall. We will have to dig those and extend those over to the twelve inch water line in order to abandon the six inch that goes through there. So that's a big part of this project.
And they're gonna do that paving after all that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, have you prioritized all these? For instance, what we're in priority is the line out of water, the water plant going down twenty-three toward the, or not going up twenty-three, it's towards town. You prioritize that line as to when it should be done?
It was.
You're saying a year and a half from now, should it be done now?
Well, that's gonna be something we need to discuss in further. If you if you replace that section there and you don't have some other strengthening water lines in place?
It will blow?
No, if if you turn off that water line, you'll turn off potentially thousands of customers. In order to do that water line replacement, you will probably at some point in the project have to turn off that water line. So we have a contingency plan to run a couple of other water lines so that whenever we do turn off that water line, it will only affect the local residents, probably a hundred customers. So it's not a real quick answer, but.
I got, I I get that.
Can we discuss this in the Capitol Projects Committee because it does get confusing? And that is if you have that redundant line coming down from DeBoer down Simpson, I think it was, to Delmon, is that right?
Yeah.
That that backfeeds all of those other customers. When we have that, when we have those adages on twenty-three in that area, those are the ones that affect four thousand, five thousand people. So if you do that redundant line before you do twenty-three, then you you have that ability to affect far less customers. And also, I like the analogy you made before. If you don't have that redundant line and you and you're putting the replacement line in on twenty-three, it's kind of like you're you're doing surgery right next to the heart. If you nick the heart, you're really gonna have some bad problems with that. I think that was your analogy.
Well, obviously, the water lines are the the primary goal here, you know. But we don't want to look like we don't know what's going on in this world. We're gonna start digging up brand-new asphalt. And especially on twenty-three. So the line coming out of the water plant headed to town, how far out the road is it? I remember seeing it up there. Is it fifteen feet out the road?
That's it.
And another fifteen down?
In between Thirty-ninth Street and Forty-third Street, there are multiple water lines. There's a sixteen, or two sixteen inches and a twenty-four inch. One was installed in nineteen oh six, one was installed in nineteen forty-something, one was installed in, I believe, nineteen seventy-something. So they're they're all side by side. So this, the water line that we're gonna replace in front of the water plant will eliminate all of them. It will, we'll get a.
I hope so. So the problem you're.
A four-for-one deal.
So the real problem you foresee is once you cut that off there to do the line, it's gonna have a very adverse effect on other customers getting their water during that period of time.
Yeah, and just like we saw on South Twenty-Ninth Street, as well as we think we know what's under the ground, there's getting stuck. And if a contractor hooks an unknown service of water line and we have to shut off that existing water line, it could potentially shut off thousands of customers. So we don't want to be in that situation. We want to have another transmission line out of the back door of DeBoer tank so that if any of that does occur during the project, it's not gonna be some large crisis, it's just gonna be a local outage.
We run a new line, though. We're gonna run it over closer to the curb or the sidewalk. We're not gonna put that and build a road.
Yeah, we're hoping to put it under the sidewalk, but I think that there's a gas line there, so I might have to put it under the curb. We're we're evaluating that right now, and I could probably have you an answer with that.
Well, this this is not from a water contractor, of course, but it would appear to me, how many lines are, you know, where we dug up to do a test on that thirty, thirty-inch line across from the big Toyota dealership? Remember, in that Warhol?
Oh, yeah.
Worked with me on this. We dug that up, put that meter on it to see water loss and all that. How many lines are in there besides that one?
Well, there's a thirty-six inch that goes up to the tank, and then there's a twenty-four inch that comes out of the tank and then goes both directions. So all the water that comes out of the water plant first goes to the DeBoer tank. And then every drop of water that feeds to the city comes out of the board tank and radiates out from that point. So there's there's two water lines.
I'm just my last thing.
Okay.
Okay, I promise you. But I'm just trying to understand, and 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 not only, not only not dig up fresh asphalt, that's not the end of the world if we do that. But if you can plan ahead and not do it, it'd be great. But we're gonna bring a line out of the plant, the new line, it's gonna run under the sidewalk is our hope. It's gonna run under Thirty-ninth Street. We're gonna dig down under, go across, we'll come up, or not come up, we're gonna continue in front of Battery Terminal. Working with me on that? Worked with me on that?
Right.
And then, then we get on down the road to maybe where that thirty-inch line, and go up to Ford Hill with it?
No, what is kind of unique is in nineteen seventies, when they widened the highway, they put a brand-new twenty-four inch line from Thirty-Ninth Street all the way to Ward Hollow. So that's a good line. I don't, I don't know that we've ever had to repair a break on it. So the repair that we would be looking at would be from Thirty-Ninth Street down to Forty-Third Street, which is where the pawn shop is located. That's the section that breaks a bit over.
Okay. So in the water plant, in that side, the water plant on the other side going to Forty-Third?
Yeah, this project that we, we're just now approving continues that on up to Kallesburg.
Ryan, both of these, the two main water projects you just described, are those both under the engineering contract with L J P?
Yes, the engineer's actually working on it right now. And we have made that number one priority along with the backdoor feed that we were talking, so keep engineering both of those. So we'll talk in the capital committee.
Well, in the capital improvements committee, one of the questions I would like to get covered is, if we can do that line and have it all ready, and this is maybe too elementary, I promise this is my last one, to tie into the water plant, okay, let's say service would be suspended for twenty-four, forty-eight hours for some people. But if we have the Board Hill deal to the brand expecting that, it should be okay, we should be okay. And then put that line online. We just figured that out in capital projects.
Yeah, the board won't support the system for twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so we will design this project such that we won't turn that line off for more than eight hours maximum.
Okay, let's say eight hours.
That's why the line in front of the plant is so critical.
Yeah. So you're saying that eight hours would be impossible to tie that into the water plant outlet? That's okay, study on it.
Right.
And report it to the Capital Projects Committee.
Okay.
Okay, along with anything else you may ask. Thank you, Ryan. I would, I'm truly not trying to be too smart.
Keeping me on my toes.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, sign out of M.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorize and direct the mayor to execute a contribution in aid of construction agreement for electric distribution services between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Kentucky Power Company for the installation of new three-phase line, three twenty-five K V A, one twenty-two forty V X F M R with two for service and removal of the old primary line, one large tree, and sidecut one tree of the twenty-four million gallon raw water reservoir for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Distribution, at a cost of $3,655.06."
So move on. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, sign out of M.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorize and direct the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Horizon Brothers Painting Corporation for the repair and painting of the Summit Water Storage Tank in the amount of $215,800 for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, sign out of M.
Adoption of a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Supporting the Ashland Complete Council Committee in Preparation of the Twenty-Twenty Census."
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, sign. Any other business? Motion adjourned.
Second.
Adjourned.